This April 7 meeting for the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I will take a motion for approval of the minutes for the November 6 meeting.
Some more?
We have seconds?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes, thank you. We have a lovely program for you today. Filled with excitement and presentations and all. And I will turn it over to Vice Chancellor Wajahal to open up our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before we do the policy items and I give an update on the capital budget, we thought it would be useful with this meeting to do a couple of presentations. Projects that this committee and the board has seen, but projects that we are making tremendous progress on. And we thought it would be good to do an update and a presentation. Actually, one of the projects that we will be doing a presentation on, the committee will vote on afterwards, which is the LaGuardia facade project. But I thought we would start with the first item, which is a Brooklyn College item, and I know that the board already voted on this program, which is a new graduate film studies program at Brooklyn College. And this is a project that will not be located on the Brooklyn College campus, but will be located at Steiner Studios, which is, I think, as this committee knows, now one of the preeminent film studios here in the city of New York. And President Gould, who is here, has worked really tirelessly since she came to the university to not only create this program, but to work with Doug Steiner to make sure that this program is well situated out at Steiner Studios. The project is at a point now where we believe that we have a deal with Doug Steiner for leased space, because the university will not own this space. We will be leasing it from Doug Steiner. And the lease will be going to Albany for approval, hopefully in a couple of weeks. And then the clock starts to tick in terms of hoping to get approval from the state to be able to enter into this lease negotiation. Steiner, Doug Steiner, has hired an architect who has designed what this committee can only imagine is very complex space. It is a graduate school of film, and so therefore it is not the typical plain vanilla-type academic space that we are used to seeing here at CUNY, although I might say in the last seven years, a lot of our space hasn't been plain vanilla, has been rather complicated with all the science that we have done. But this will be very unique space for CUNY and for the city of New York. So I would just like to introduce the architect who will make the presentation. His name is Richard Datner. The university has used him before. His firm has done a lot of work throughout the city of New York. Many of the new schools that you see that have opened in the last 12 years have been designed by his firm. For those of us who drive up the West Side Highway and we see that massive new sanitation garage going up on spring in the West Side Highway, Mr. Datner's firm has designed that. And one would never know that there was a sanitation garage behind those walls. And with Mr. Datner is Daniel Huberger, another architect in his firm. I just want to give a particular shout-out to two people on my staff. Reece Honig, who is the Assistant Director and is responsible for Brooklyn College, has worked tirelessly on this project, as well as Ralph Carmicio, who's our project director. Ralph also has Brooklyn College in his portfolio. We believe, at the end of the day, that this will be a spectacular addition, not only to Brooklyn College, but to the university as a whole, and will provide an opportunity for students to be able to get a graduate degree in film or video, one that's affordable and will not, in the end of the day, cost them $50,000 or $70,000 a year to be able to do this. So I'm going to turn the program over to Richard, who is going to take us through the design, and to Daniel.
A lot of people work tirelessly, but sometimes we get tired.
We all get tired.
I'll speak from here while Daniel starts the presentation. This is a unique project, and in a sense, we've been practicing to do this for 10 years because we've been working with the Steiner folks on 10 sound stages at the Navy Yard. Daniel, do you have, is this the controller?
Yeah, here we go.
So anybody who's read the newspapers knows that Brooklyn is the center of the world now, especially when it comes to media. So in the most unique borough for media and creative work, the most unique building, we're about to insert the most really unique film program in New York City. The Navy Yard is an incredible place. It's quickly becoming one of the new technology hubs of the world. The Steiner Studios are now the largest movie production studios east of Hollywood and continue to grow. And locating the School of Cinema in this place really is a great relationship, because students will be able to work surrounded by actual production and hopefully get jobs in that production and really become part of the whole creative scene. The building was built in 1941 by the Navy. It's part of the effort of World War II. And it's capped by an antenna, which any of you who've driven by can see. The antenna was to communicate with ships at sea and, in fact, with submarines underwater in a very low frequency. But it always reminds me of the beginning of the old Fox Theatre movies, where you had an antenna and electronic waves emanating from it. Well, very quick, soon, the electronic waves of the media done by the Brooklyn students will be emanating from the building. The cinema school will be on the top two floors, about the entire sixth floor, about two-thirds of the fifth floor comprising some 56,000 square feet of space. And among the interventions that we've designed for this building is a way to make out of these two floors a real campus for the college. And Daniel, who's been the partner in charge of this project since its beginning, will continue the presentation.
So as Richard said, this project is a campus within a campus. It's the Brooklyn College Film School, Graduate School of Film, inside the larger Steiner movie lot campus. And what I'll do is I'll take you through the two floors. And this facility has everything in it that you need to make a movie from nothing to a completely finished, professional-quality movie. The days where movies involved celluloid film and film reels, those days are over. Everything is done digitally these days. And in this school, you can do everything from shoot film to light it, to build sets, both real sets and virtual computer-constructed sets, to special effects, to sound, to editing, everything that you need. It is not only a facility that is going to be technically very advanced, but also a real community, a place, like any other school within the CUNY system. It's a campus, it's a center of learning, it's a place where people go not just to learn things, but to meet each other and talk about ideas. So you enter the school on the fifth floor, which you see in front of you. There's an entrance lobby with some administrative spaces, security. And on this floor are a lot of the classrooms and what we call post-production spaces. These are the spaces that you use to finish the movie. So in a sense, although I'm taking you through the floors in a chronological sequence, as you enter the space, in terms of the sequence of making a movie, it's actually backwards. So you have editing rooms, you have a Foley room where they do sound effects, you have a scoring stage where they can add music to the film. And you also see on the upper left-hand corner that long corridor, those are faculty offices. All of the classrooms are computerized, digitally-enabled. And in fact, there are two different digital networks inside this building. One is the regular network that students will use for documents and emails and communicating with the Brooklyn College Intranet and the CUNY Intranet. And the second network is a digital, a high-speed digital network, which is the network that they're going to use to transfer their film files from one space to another, from the production stages where they have the cameras, to the editing rooms where they edit it, to the faculty offices so their professors can review their work. Also, you'll see in the bottom of the screen, you'll see an area which is a little more reddish. That is the beginning of a huge connecting stair that will link both levels that we call the Forum. And the reason we call it the Forum is because it's not only a stair, it's also the center of this new campus. It's a place where students will meet, will socialize, it can be used as an impromptu event space, as a classroom space, even as a film-projection space. And you can see some of the students sitting on those stairs, talking to each other. They'll look out the windows, you can see the New York skyline in the distance and the Navy Yard in the foreground. You can also see on this slide that the ground floor where the post-production and classroom spaces are is much lower. It's more of a conventional floor than the top floor, which is really a unique space. It's 320 feet long, it's 100 feet wide, and it's 20 feet high. It's basically like a huge airplane hangar, and that is where we have the production spaces because of the headroom and the sheer amount of space, which is really a unique thing and you would only find in an old industrial building like this. We have four different production spaces, including the one all the way on the right-hand side, which is really the premier production space for two reasons. One, it's the biggest, at a little over 2,500 square feet. We've removed several columns, which we're able to do, because this is the top floor of the building, so we don't have the weight of all the floors above us. And this room is really what we call a box within a box. It is a completely soundproof room, and you can do open-mic recording without picking up sounds from airplanes passing overhead, or cars in the street, or sounds anywhere else in the building. We also have a wardrobe room, we have a workshop where they build the sets, we have a very large equipment room, which is the room, a little bit in yellow at the top of the screen. Very important, a film school is a little bit like a factory, and there's always equipment moving around from one production studio to another. Or sometimes the students take it down the freight elevator, which is right in the middle of our plan, they load it into a van, and they go and shoot on location, and then they bring the footage that they've shot for further editing and finishing back in the school. There's also a special effects room, which is called motion capture. I'm sure some of you have seen this. The guy in the jumpsuit wears a bunch of little white dots, and they can suspend them in the air, and, you know, he becomes Spider-Man or Superman or whatever you have, flying through the air. And then they enter that into the computer system, and they can use it for doing special animation. So this is really a Hollywood-style facility. It's not quite at the scale of a Hollywood studio, but it has all of the features that the graduates can expect to find later in their careers when they actually go out for a job. And perhaps the most extraordinary thing about this location is that the film business works very much on the principle of word-of-mouth, of internships. So imagine, all of your future employers are not only across the street, they're actually riding the elevator with you up and down to your classes. This is one of the spaces on the sixth floor. It is the screening room. This will have full Dolby sound. It's completely insulated from all the surrounding spaces. It's not only for projecting movies, obviously, but for also having classrooms, for having guest directors. So when Martin Scorsese comes and talks to the students, this is where he will come. Of course, the projection is digital, state-of-the-art. And this final slide gives you a sense of all of the range of different production spaces, from the huge soundstage up at the top on the sixth floor, to the smaller editing and special effects and classroom suites below. It shows how on top it is acoustically separated from the exterior envelope. You see the double wall. That's for sound control and light control. This place will be a formidable asset, not only to CUNY and Brooklyn College, but I think to the entire American film industry.
Madam Chair, I feel, I failed to mention that this school does have a name, that President Gould was tireless in terms of getting a gift, and this will be called the Barry R. Feirstein Graduate School of Cinema at Brooklyn College. Feirstein, I think.
Feirstein.
Feirstein. And so in the future, it will not be just known as the Graduate Film Program, but will be known as the Barry Feirstein Graduate School of Cinema. And we are anticipating that this school will open with students in the 2016 academic year.
Did I understand you? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please finish, I apologize.
No. I'm finished, but you can go.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Did I understand that the Datner organization is contracted to the Steiners?
Yes.
Rather than to CUNY?
Yes.
So to what extent will we have any oversight or input to design and the programming? I assume a lot, but...
Total control.
But they're, we're not their client, but we still have total control?
Yes.
Contractually, we're not their client.
Right.
And yours...
Remember, the plans and specs get affixed to the lease that gets approved, so therefore we have to be in total agreement that this is what we want, what we need built up.
Your staff will have oversight.
As will the college. We've been working very closely with President Gould and the new dean for this school, and we've had tremendous back-and-forth with Datner, with the college, with my staff, and with Steiner as well.
Great, thank you.
Just a couple of questions about the economics of it, in terms of, we've been talking about off and on for the Science Center equipment costs, and while this is not quite as equipment-heavy a use as a Science Center, nonetheless, do we know what the, I'm not even sure whether this is within your...
No, it is.
But do we know what kind of useful life the equipment has? Because one would figure the digital equipment in this field is something that probably cycles out every five years or so.
Could cycle out every five years. We're working on a model that we developed along with the college as to what type of equipment that they would need, assuming that the school would open in 2016. It is part of our budget for this project. I might add also that the university and the college worked very closely with Catherine Oliver, who was the commissioner of, I guess, the film industry for Mayor Bloomberg. They very generously gave us a grant of about $4.7 million, of which a portion of it was required to go for video-type of equipment. So you're right. I mean, we are assuming that we're going to get it right when the school opens.
Which I'm sure you will, but you're looking at it right for five years, probably.
We will. Right, but there are, as you know, if the school is as successful as we believe it will be, we're sure that there'll be many sponsors who will want to come up, work with the school, as well as both the city council and the mayor have been very generous to these programs in terms of rezaway money, as well as the borough president. So if the equipment has to be changed out over years, they will have to be changed out. We'll have to purchase it.
Okay. So a second question would be, and sort of, which you're already sort of starting to, you're sort of raising it obliquely, there is, with all of these facilities, is there an expectation that we will be able to get some rental income for periods that the school is not going to be, that our students are not going to be using this? And obviously, the Steiners might be concerned about internal competition, but have we been at least thinking about that?
I'm hoping that the facility will be used 12 months out of the year by our students. Right? So, yes. But the answer is yes, that, you know, we will have the ability to work with all facets of this industry. And as I said, if we have gotten it right, which I believe the president has in terms of structuring a program, we will have students there 12 months out of the year using the facility.
This is graduate or undergraduate?
Graduate.
Graduate-only, and what's the projected enrollment?
400, when they're up to their...
400 maxed out?
Yes, when they're up to their full cadre.
Full-time graduate?
Yes, full-time students.
And the anticipated length of the lease with the Steiner organization?
It's going to be about 30 years, you know, there's an initial lease, and then there are two subsequent renewals that we will be entitled to.
Options after 20 years or after 30 years?
I think it's after 10 or 15, I'm not sure, but it's a 30-year lease period.
Basic escalations or...
Yes. There's, the lease is very specific about operating expenses, as you can well imagine. This is very complex space, and therefore there are various degrees of operating expenses that will be required to take care of.
So the lower floors are already being used, which leads me...
They're not all being used. This is a building that the Steiner organization is slowly developing. They have in the building a few production companies that are using the space right now. You know, they come in to shoot a film, they need office space, they need some editing space, and they're using it sort of like hotel space for production companies.
Got you.
Yes.
Hold harmless or any kind of indemnification for environmental?
Well...
All in place?
All in place.
So it was used by the Navy, so God knows what it was there.
Yeah, exactly. But they build good, strong buildings. I want to make you very, feel very comfortable about that. Their buildings last for a long time.
I'm working on one in Washington where they, it was Navy, but they were busy building torpedoes, and the grindings were all in the ground, so...
There's a building like that at the Navy Yard where they were building torpedoes also, but that's not this building.
That's not this building.
No.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I think you have to take it for granted, there are going to be environmental problems on that site, not necessarily ones that'll be hazardous to people, but that just contamination...
Well, we're indemnified, I think, is what I...
Yes, we're fine.
Did we do a Phase 1?
I would have to check, I'm pretty sure it'll be...
Something that we should have made more clear is, this building has been completely renovated, actually by our firm, prior to this project. So it's been abated.
So there were environmental studies in a Stage 1, Stage 2?
Yes, yes.
Fine, great, thank you.
Yeah, just as a side note, at night with those submarine towers and the lighting, it is absolutely spectacular to go view it. I recommend everybody do it, it's really, really cool. It'd be great. Will this be the first in the system?
First graduate film program? I believe so, yes.
And actually, just following up on Charles's issue, so is the asbestos already out of this space, or have they been taking the asbestos out? Because again, building of that generation, one would have to assume there was asbestos in there at some point, so is it, is it gone?
It's all been remediated and removed.
Okay.
Yeah, the building is basically as pristine as a 70-year-old building.
It's too bad, because it could have horror films.
All right, I think we're going to go to the next presentation. Is there another presentation?
Yes, there's another presentation. A lot of show and tell today. So I think this committee has heard me speak about for the last umpteen years about critical maintenance. And as you know, probably in the last six years, we've committed or spent over $800 million in critical maintenance projects throughout the university. We have a building at LaGuardia Community College. It's called Center 3. It was purchased by the university well over 40 years ago. It's a very large building, it's a million square feet. The floor plates are 85,000 square feet per floor, and there are nine floors in the building. There's a few things that keep me up at night in this job, and one of that has to do with facades of buildings. And this building is over 100 years old. And a few years ago, a piece of the facade fell off. We're lucky, it fell off in the middle of the night when nobody was there. But I always live in fear that one day a piece will fall off. And we put up a sidewalk bridge, but clearly that's not enough in, for such a large building and such a large structure. So we embarked on a program to redo the facade of this building, not only for the aesthetics, but primarily for the safety and the safety of our students and the public and for the people at large. We hired the firm of Mitchell Jurgula, and I think this committee has heard them before. They've done numerous other projects for us to design the facade of this building. As the architect will tell us, this building, this project, had to go to the Art Commission because it's a building that is not on one of our campuses, it's on a city street. And so we went through the arduous process of getting Art Commission approval, so much to the level of the detail of the color and the signage is what the Art Commission has to approve, but we have all that approval now. We also have approval from both, because this is a community college, 50% of the money is coming from the city, 50% from the state. We now have approval from OMB to proceed with this project. And so I'm going to turn the presentation over to Carol Lowenson, who's one of the partners of Mitchell Jurgula, and she will take us through this very exciting project.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, good. We just have to get the slides up. So we're in another important borough. Brooklyn's in Queens, and so we can start with the, oh yeah, here we go. So I think everyone knows this building, it's had a lot of different signs. It's interesting, this was the Sunshine Biscuit Factory, and it was, it's almost 100, it's a little over 100 years old now, which it's had a long and useful life, it's a million square feet. It was built by Turner, you can see their sign here, in less than a year. I don't know, they knew something back then. It's quite extraordinary that they pulled that off. It's a steel and concrete building. They used terracotta at the time, which was really a new material and very exciting, and a very progressive building. The big sign, the Loose Wild Sunshine Biscuit Factory, was a really important part of the building, an important historic part of the building, and the Public Design Committee sort of bought into that as well. Just as a reminder, I'm sure all of you know the campus, but the building, Center 3, is really the gateway to the campus, and it is a very important part of what goes on at the college. But as Iris said, this is, the ravages of time have really been tough on this building, although it did, it has lasted 100 years. And the terracotta facing is coming off the building. The sidewalk bridge, I don't know how long she, here, it's been up at least, they've been up at least 10 years, and it's just part, it's just part of the landscape now. So I think it's well overdue for both safety and aesthetic reasons. Just a little bit of background here, we did a master plan for the building. It's 85,000 square floor plate, it's huge. There's, you know, buildings that are 85,000 square feet, and this is 400 feet long, over 400 feet long. So how do you divide up a building and have it really work in the future? It's no longer a big factory where everybody's just out in the open. So we just developed a way to organize the building with circulation, being able to bring in natural light, which hadn't existed before. And what it did was give us a framework as we started planning the building, and then for how we would reclad it. So if you see these yellow stripes in the section, you'll see in the new facade, which we did spend a lot of time with various agencies over the year-plus that we were working, we really tried to maintain the historic character of the building, the big white building, the big white mass, the punched openings, to use the, use terracotta, but use it in a new way, but also express this college that's in the building instead of the factory. Those yellow lines that you remember from the section are here expressed on the outside of the building, and we will be bringing a lot of natural light into the building, and we will have a big sign that says LaGuardia Community College, which I think everyone is quite excited about. The people, various people in the Design Commission had comments, but in the end, they weren't quite excited about it. The, this rendering sort of places the artist's rendering view in the gritty context of Long Island City, where I think it really holds up to the context, and you could, you'll really be able to see that the language of the new materials expresses themselves. As we cross the bridge and get closer to the building, there will be banners that will identify the college and that this is really the first building of LaGuardia. Just as a reminder, before and after, here, this is, you're approaching the building, there's actually an entry on the corner right now, which is quite dangerous, and then there's another entry there. And this is going to be the new crossing. And then there's another entry there, and this is gonna be the, the new crossing, a new big lobby and these canopies actually were part of the original design of the building. Another before and after, as you can see, there'll be places for people to sit, we're going to, Parks Department got very interested in the project and we're gonna be planting some trees. This, this is sort of a fun picture, where you can see where the facade, the existing materials are gonna come off. The concrete that you saw in that first slide remains, there was brick that was there before that will remain. And then these, this is all panelized and it will come to, the curtain wall will come to the site and be placed on the building very quickly. One more, just for, so people understand, it's not all a million square feet of exterior not being done at once, it's gonna be in four phases and they'll be trying to minimize the impact on the college. The site plan, it's important to see because really a lot of agencies did, did participate in the planning here and there's been some difficulties with pedestrians and some unsafe conditions and we're widening the sidewalk and going to have these, what they call bulbouts. The yellow dots reflect new lighting that is being added and then the Parks Department trees. So there's a lot of enhancements and improvements that will happen, and then here's that centralized entry moving away from this more dangerous corner entry. In order to, because we had to relocate the entry, it also has led to the relocation of security from this corner to a more central place and then a relocation of the food service as well, from a tight condition here to there. The, the large assembly room will remain, which was very important to keep that in, in operation and also not to add to any expense, so a lot of creative work had to go into, into making all that happen. And these are just some sketches of the experiences, you come into the lobby, the security, the sign that dared to do more for LaGuardia, a stair that will allow people to walk up to the second floor, the, the new cafe cafeteria. And finally, the, the new experience of arriving at Center Three. So we're excited and I think the, the project is out to bid right now. Bids are expected in late June and construction is expected to start by July. So I think I've given an overview and I'm sure there are questions.
So this is a very exciting project and we believe that it's gonna really change the look and the feel of LaGuardia Community College and will, will really let people know that they've arrived at the college where, right now, it's just disparate buildings, one's not quite sure where one is going.
Mrs. Lowenstein, it does look exciting. The, in the original, initial panels, you talked about the yellow striping and then that was gonna be reflected in the, the finished facade. How will that, is that, what will that material be, are you talking about lighting?
It'll be glass.
It'll be glass, great.
Yeah, if we go back to this, um- Here you can really see, this is, it's full high glass, so as you're in any of those cross corridors, it will just be flooded with light.
So it'll get more, that's right, that's great. The second question is more technical, the new paneling, and I did read the summary, it will have an ease of installation as factory formed. Can you talk to us a little bit about the technical durability? I mean, if the Vice Chancellor lies awake at night worrying about facade falling, what kind of assurances can you give us that this new facade, which is replacing the old facade, will have real longevity and be secure? Just a brief technology, this is new technology?
No, curtain wall has been around for a long time.
Well, no, that I know.
And so it's really curtain wall technology, it's panelized. If we, I just wanna go back to this slide. Each one of the, these are each about Heidi, about four by eleven. So these are, these pieces, they will come to the site and be installed. The advantage of curtain wall construction is that you really have the quality control in the factory. And so that you're not having, everything will be in place in the field, when the, when the panels come to the field, they will just be installed. And they, we will have, we're actually, just to, to sort of go further into this, because I can see your wondering, the, we are going to survey the, the building, we have done surveys already of where the planes of the building are and where they will, where, where the, when you take the terracotta off, where will be, the contractors are all required to survey the building again, so that every condition will really be understood and planned for, so that when the curtain wall pieces come to the field, they just go up. You're not trying to figure out how to make an adjustment in the field, the adjustments have all been taken care of ahead of time.
So you don't, or you do require significant oversight of the contractor? Which tells you don't want-
There's always, there's always oversight of the contract.
That's where I'm really, my mind jumped to-
Yeah, there's also, I, I will say that there's very, CUNY and DASNY have hired a very good construction manager who's worked very closely with us throughout the, the process, and so it's been very collaborative throughout. It's not like they're suddenly gonna inherit documents.
Okay, so they've been working-
So we've been, been working very closely together to develop-
Who is that, we signed off on somebody, I can't remember?
TDX.
TDX.
TDX was a firm that did the library at Bronx Community College and I might add, they did a superb job.
Thank you.
Do, do we know what, can you just give us an idea of what the cost is of doing it via the panels compared to traditional curtain wall construction? I'm sure it's a lot less, but-
This is curtain wall.
Well, but traditional, non-panelized, non-panelized.
Okay, well, that's interesting, because one of the things we looked at was, what if you just replaced it in kind? And it was astronomical, I don't know, Heidi, do you remember, it was, it was four times the price, something? And, and time was, it was very time-consuming. And they're not really making terracotta that way anymore, because it's not really, technology has gone beyond it, the moisture, they think-
That went out by nineteen forty, really, yeah. So now, do we, have you identified the, I assume you've identified the provider of the paneling, if you are, if you're preparing to start construction in July, or is that still out to bid?
It's, no, it's out to bid and one of the things that we did to make it competitive was to design and specify it in such a way that multiple people could, could reasonably be able to bid on it. I mean, there's very high standards in our specifications, but it's not just that there's one person out there that's gonna, you know, take every one of the cleaners, it should be a very strong competitive bid, we've got a lot of good bidders.
And, and what kind of warranties are we asking for from the, you know, from the providers? Because obviously with this, you know, one, one, obviously I know you're looking for qualified people, but you, you don't want the lowball person who hasn't done this before or whatever, so, so what kind of warranties are, are we planning to get?
You're absolutely right, the warranty-
So it's a typical curtain wall, it's usually five years on the installation, we have ten years on the materials and then all sealants, which is typically where curtain walls fail, is about twenty-five years.
And, and is there, do we have, is that gonna be bonded or what?
Yes.
Okay.
By the way, this is not the first curtain wall project that we've done. One prominent building that should stand in your mind is Fideman Hall, which was done, as was the new library at Bronx Community College, am I right, Bob?
Yes, we also wanted to ask this in the college.
Yes, where we redid the facade of that building, totally, because that's what kept Alan up at night, that building.
So, so were those panelized construction too?
Yes, they were, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, so what you're saying is, well, this is on a vast scale, but okay, but nonetheless it's-
Although Marshack is a fairly large building, Bob, how many square feet is Marshack?
Okay, that's a small building, yeah.
Trustee Martel?
Two, I guess one question. Well, I look, the material looked like it was gonna take three years to accomplish this, is the estimate?
Thirty, thirty-two months is the current schedule.
And it's, the building's gonna be occupied?
Yes.
That looks noisy. How are we gonna, how, what's the plan to deal with that? Because that's a functioning building, that's a key building to the campus.
So we've been thinking about that from day one and we actually have done re-clads of other buildings. We re-clad a courthouse that was in operation that had the same kinds of issues. And we've worked closely with the college, with Shaheer, with the other people in the college and noisy work will have to happen after hours. Luckily, you know, ten years from now, maybe, this may be a really strong residential area, but the immediate area is not, so I think that there'll be opportunities to, to work after hours. But it's, there's been allowances put in, there's expectation there'll be overtime work.
And also, one of the challenges for us is that I wish this building was totally occupied by the university, but it's not. The eighth floor is vacant, the ninth floor is vacant, the sixth floor is a private tenant who will be moving out this summer. It's a watch manufacturer, we inherited the tenant when we bought the building. So not all the floors, the seventh floor is, is vacant in this building. So you're right, there will be noise, but it's not as though there's a million square feet of space that's occupied. So there will be some noise and those people who are there will have to bear up, but it's not totally occupied.
And it all sounds like you may be able to do some temporary classrooms, therefore, in the unoccupied space to the extent you've got noise at one end, maybe, I'm, I'm not-
Not on new floors, because the floors are not built out in this, in this, I'm sorry, yeah.
And we did Marshack that way, we didn't get a lot of complaints back to me.
We also redid the facade at, at Voorhees Hall at New York City Tech. When you come over the bridge, of the Brooklyn Bridge or the Manhattan Bridge, you'll see a, what looks like a new building for New York City Tech. We redid the entire facade of that building while the building was totally inhabited. So I hear what you're saying and we are very cognizant of the fact that people are working and taking classes and we try and be as, as observant as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Wonderful, I'd like to thank Carol-
Thank you, so also I want to introduce Heidi Sadler, an associate with our firm, who is the project manager and who clearly knows it all.
Thank you both very much, and I also like to thank Mr. Datner and Mr. Holberger, who I believe has left, from Datner Architects. And now we're moving on to our policy calendar and I believe there are three additional items that we need voting on, so I'm gonna turn it back over to her.
Okay, and just before we, we leave this, I just wanna, Gail Mello could not be here, but Shaheer, who is the VP for Administration, we've worked very closely with the college on this and they are a wonderful partner for this very complicated project. And as Carol noted, you know, with all of the city oversight agencies, they went hand in hand with us to get the approval. So I just wanna thank the college and, and thank Carol. So before we go to the items that we need a vote on, I just thought I'd give an update of the budget. As the committee knows, the budget, the state budget was passed last week and a number of months ago, we, we got word on what the governor's proposed budget was gonna be on the Capitol side and there have been some significant changes to the bill that was passed by both the Assembly and the State Senate. So originally, we were gonna get about two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million dollars in critical maintenance, another fifty-five million dollars for the second phase of CUNY 2020. In, I guess, in the, in the world of Albany, we were a little more successful. We did get critical maintenance money, about two-hundred-and-six million. And then the, the, the budget bill now gives us new programmatic funding for projects that were on what we call the gold sheet, that's the sheet that we talked to the legislature about and we go up and lobby on. So there were five projects that we went and spoke to the legislature about and five projects, senior colleges, that we got funding for. For Baruch College, for Seventeen Lexes, the committee knows we're under a renovation of that project. We've started Phase One and we received thirty million dollars, which will allow us now to go to the second phase of that project. At Brooklyn College, for Roosevelt Hall, which is their new instructional science building, and I might add, Mitchell Jurgula is the design architects for that building. We will be getting thirty, thirty-five million dollars toward that project. At Lehman College, the, the new school for their nursing program, we received twenty-two million dollars and I might add that we already have twenty million dollars budgeted and appropriated for that project and with a little bit more money, we believe that we'll be able to start that project fairly quickly. At Staten Island, we received ten million dollars for their new high-performance computational center. And at York College, which I know there was a presentation made to this committee about a year ago for the design of that new building, we received thirty million dollars. So all told, we got a hundred-and-twenty-seven million dollars toward new programmatic funds. In addition, there was a lump sum, amount of money put into the capital budget, of sixty-seven million dollars, which before I came to CUNY, this was done once before, I guess Alan was aware of it, he was here at the time. And these funds require not only that we get approval from DOB, but that we get approval from the Senate, once we've identified which projects this money will go into. And most importantly, I know this committee has heard me talk numerous times about how city funds for community colleges are very important, because they get matched by the state. And last year, we got four-point-five million dollars for the proposed new Allied Health Building at Hostos Community College. We had gotten the four-point-five million from the, the City Council and our president and now the state has matched that four-point-five million. So we have the ability now to go out and to hire an architect and plan what that building will be. And in addition, the legislature did add the second round of the fifty-five million dollars for CUNY 2020. So all told, we got new funding of about five-hundred-and-twelve million dollars, very welcome by the university and it will be very well-used.
Could I ask about the sixty-seven million dollar lump sum money?
Sure.
Those are monies that are essentially allocated for specific projects that we come up with, that we have to submit for approval?
Yes, it is a lump sum, there's no projects yet identified to go with it.
So that comes through the colleges and then through your office and then to Albany, how does it work? Tell us a little bit about that.
Well, we will work with the individual colleges in terms of priorities. Our goal will be to try and get those dollars spent and direct it to projects where we could actually start a project and get it in the ground. So we will work with the colleges to figure out which of those projects are at that point. We will then, you know, go back to the chancellor and come back to the committee and talk about the priorities and then we will have to go to DOB to get their approval and then we will go to the State Senate.
And to what committee, you mean this committee?
Yeah, we will keep the committee advised as to how we're gonna move along.
Through individual colleges or is there a forum, or does it come from the council presidents? I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of, and I assume that these are new projects or rehabs?
The sixty-seven million, we would hope to use for new projects, not for critical maintenance, because we have a pot of money, we have the two-hundred-and-six million that was appropriated in this budget. But I think that it will be a discussion among many people at the table as to how we should spend that sixty-seven million.
So the critical maintenance does include infrastructure?
It does, it's facilities preservation. There are lump sums that are in the critical maintenance fund, as well as money is, 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 is allocated to individual colleges in the actual budget bill itself.
Okay, and that too, the critical, critical maintenance projects come from the individual colleges up through your office?
They actually come from the report that we did and we updated, it's the critical maintenance report that we did, which-
Which was done when?
It was, I'm sorry, excuse me.
When was that done, I apologize.
Well, initially it was done about six years ago and then we updated it three years ago, as well as there are emergency projects that come up that we use critical maintenance. But there are subcategories within that, there's money for ADA upgrades, as I said, facilities preservation, so there are a number of different categories that we can use that money for.
So with regard to, I'm sorry, this, I-
No, 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 please, please, I'm just, just reminding that they're action items.
They're what?
Action items, we're on the action item.
Oh, I, I, okay, stop. No, I, you don't, I don't need a memo.
Okay, well, no, but actually I would like to follow up a little bit, which is, I'm glad, obviously, three years and six years ago or before I was on this committee, but I do think that it might be useful to sort of look at particularly critical maintenance more for, for, for this committee, to see it from a portfolio perspective, maybe even annually, even if there's not a full-scale report as you're doing on a three-year cycle, because when I'm hearing fire safety has now come, two meetings in a row, obviously facades, and I, and I know that you are extremely concerned of working as hard as possible, eight-hundred million dollars on this shows the level of commitment and effort, you know, but, but I think if we're looking at our portfolio, I would assume eyeballing it, that eighty percent is more than forty years old and probably twenty percent is more than seventy years old, off the top of my head. I just think we, we're well advised, sort of as a committee, to look at the portfolio, you know, year by year, get a portfolio-level overview to really see where we are, what we're doing and, and what the key items are, particularly given the, the extreme difficulty in, in cobbling all the sources of funding together, even to do- in cobbling all the sources of funding together, even to do the most critical maintenance.
Are you planning on doing that early, or?
Yes, we were, we were going to do another critical maintenance.
Okay, and what, maybe another?
About another year.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, yeah, I would just say we'd probably be well advised, just try, even if it's not the full-scale.
Well, we didn't, three years ago, we didn't do the full-scale.
Okay, but we may just, but I think annually, because the other issue is just even from a liability perspective, if, you know, we know that the risks that are just embedded in the portfolio, despite the extremely excellent work, and I think the university is in better shape if we can say, yes, we have this process for monitoring how it's being matched, what's being done, priorities being set. So if, God forbid, there is ever a problem, then we can certainly say, we have our process, it's been reviewed by the committee, and we followed it.
Okay, I think your point is well-taken. I also think that Iris and her great staff probably have that all planned out already, if I'm.
Just beginning.
Just beginning. So we'll definitely keep this body informed of that, but we do need to move forward with our action items, so is there something else you want us to talk about?
No, that's it.
Okay.
So as the chair said, we have three action items. One is for Bronx Community College, it's their student center fire alarm project. And the fire alarm system at the center is not in compliance with the current building code, and the CUCF intends to upgrade the system to meet the new code requirements. The work will include removal of existing systems, purchase of materials required, and labor to install, and final, final approval by the fire department of the City of New York. And let me just say that even though the system is not in compliance, we do have a fire watch there, so people do not.
As you've mentioned, you are always prudent in where we don't have it done, in having the fire watch, and in doing what we need to for safety.
And, I'm sorry, there were four action items. The second item is the project that we just got a presentation on, which is LaGuardia Community College, Center Three, the replacement of the facade. And as noted, it will be in stages over a 36-month period. And as also noted, it's going to be in a system that's used by a curtain wall system that will be erected to the facade of the building. The third item is, we are going out for a REQ, a request for qualifications, for, to award approximately 36 separate requirements contracts to replace the expiring engineering design services requirements contracts currently in use. Let me just say that these contracts will really expedite, expedite on an as-needed basis at the university, at various sites and facilities, in mechanical, electrical, plumbing, environmental, and special inspection. Each contract will have a not-to-exceed amount of $4.95 million for three years, with a three-year renewal option. Historically, we've gone out individually for these services. As you can well imagine, it has slowed up the amount of time it takes us to complete projects. So we believe that this will eliminate a very expensive and burdensome process that the division has had. And the last item is a lease renewal for John Jay College of Criminal Justice. They occupy both classroom and office space at 845 10th Avenue. It's a lease which was entered into in 2004, and it stands to be expired in 2014. This resolution will create a new 20-year lease in the site, and the site is almost 60,000 square feet. It's the building that houses not only office space and classroom space, but also has the John Jay bookstore in the basement. And those are the items, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will take a motion to adopt these.
I could just ask a couple, I know we're running short on time.
Will you get the motion?
We'll make the motion, then we'll ask questions.
Yes, yes.
Okay, if that's fine, okay.
Second.
Second, okay. It's your discussion.
Yes, okay, two things. It sounds like for the, for the engineering design services, that sounds parallel to what you, the process you were using for architectural design?
Yes.
For pre-contracting with certain firms? So can you give us a perspective on how that pre-contracting has worked with the architectural firms thus far? Because you've had about a year of experience with it?
We've had more than a year of experience. It's really been great, because as you know, when we came to the committee, we broke it down into categories. So if we needed to do landscape architecture, we had, already had a pre-selected list. We needed to do libraries, we already had a pre-selected list. And the way that it works is that we do a mini-bid among those firms within that category. And so it's cut down on the amount of time and effort that we have to go into vetting through these firms. So a number of projects have been able to move along much more quickly, knowing that we have these architectures.
And you will be following a similar process? I see the stuff got lined up, but with separate subspecialties for engineering firms?
Yes, for electrical, plumbing, environmental, and special inspection.
So, would you, curiosity, 36 separate firms, or will it be by function?
By function.
So you would bid electrical, so there might be two or three firms?
Yeah, they'll be in silos.
Because I didn't think there might be 36 firms in the region. There probably would.
There probably are. I don't, don't cut this region short.
And then second question on leasing, and if we're short on time, this can certainly get deferred, but looking at the leasing, again, it looks like it's certainly a prudent lease. The lease embeds with it a bet with the step-ups in base rent, you know, on inflation or whatever for the future. So once again, are we looking at, and I'm sure that the lease is a prudent, well-executed, well-negotiated one, are we looking at our portfolio as a whole to see what kind of bets we're making? Because I don't know how many, how much, how many square feet of space we're leasing. I would suspect it's a lot, and again, you know, we, you know, should we be looking at at some point doing a portfolio-level review of that?
We do, and, you know, part of the issue with us, which are, with our colleges, when we need to lease space adjacent to the colleges, I thought your question was going to be, gee, isn't this an expensive lease? That's what I thought your question was going to be, and the answer is yes, because it's in a section of Manhattan that's up and coming, right near Hudson.
Yeah, no, I thought it was quite a reasonable lease, considering where it was.
I'm glad.
I'd like you to get it for less, but short of moving it into the Hudson, you know.
We thought, we thought we did pretty well on this lease, in light of the area that's in. So the answer is yes. When leases come up, we look at where the space has to be, is it adjacent to the college? But we're always looking at our portfolio. And Al Toscano and his staff, one staff, do an excellent job in terms of, you know, trying to hit the market at the right time, and trying to get us good deals when the market is dipping. So the answer is yes.
And the landlord is?
Related.
Sorry?
The related company.
The related companies.
Are there any other questions?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table to adopt these four policy calendar items?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Abstentions, and it passes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.